Morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selecting meeting for December 4. And just sort of start off by saying we had lovely tree lighting despite the rain on Friday. Renner was there with me and it was very nice. So happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everyone. I'd like to open the meeting, if we could, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should mention, Zerby sells back in. Matt Hoey is out on the West Coast and sends his regrets, obviously, but he'll be back for our next meeting, actually back during the week. So we have one item to add to the agenda regarding an item that our Public Works Director brought to our attention sale of some excess sand. It's salt, actually, if the town has. And I get a motion to add that to the agenda. Because we'll put that in on right after item four, which is the Guilford Foundation. So maybe, maybe put that as 4.2. We know it's not exactly related, 4.2. Okay. So we have a couple of meeting minutes. We had the Capitol Plan meeting. Can I have a motion to accept those, please? Any discussion, comments, corrections? I didn't have any on this. Everybody have a chance? Okay. Hearing no questions or comments, all in favor of approving those minutes for the Capitol Plan meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? All right, thank you. We also had our meeting minutes for November 20th. I have a motion.
Oh. Second.
Okay, questions, comments? I had just a couple tiny, tiny typos. In section four, the revenues, second to the bottom line in that section, it says Fire, Youth and Family Services are doing will. Guess that should be well. There's, and I understand our Finance Director is not here today. Now, well, I did have a question on expenditures, I'll just save it last month, just the status of vehicle purchases and what's going on. I'm looking for a follow-up, which came up at that meeting. And then really actually a substantive correction in item two, you know, 4.2, discussing a potash on a resolution regarding supplemental appropriation for air conditioning at Baldwin Middle School. It's interesting, it says, the line says, Ms. Malvazi explained that bond resolutions, if the BOS and BOF, the autonomy to move that money around. I think we asked, and she made a point of saying for similar, sufficiently similar projects that they're within the bonding resolutions. So that was asked and clarified.
Yeah, maybe we could say something like, it is within the authority of, rather than moving that money around.
For similar, similar projects within the bonding?
Yeah.
Okay. So how about if we say that do we have the authority to move money between bonds that are similarly directed?
Well, it's within each bond's authorization. Each bond has authorization.
Within each bond authorization. That's great, thank you. Okay. And that would be it for me. Anything else for anybody? Okay, hearing, nothing further, all in favor is corrected?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And that brings us to the Guilford Foundation. We have a number of representatives here, whoever wants to come up.
Oh, yes.
Liza, good morning.
Good morning. I'll bring my giant coffee mug, it's a little embarrassing how I pick this coffee mug. It's hard to hold. I'm going to present, I think you've received the notice of what we've done with the funding, which we're really, really proud of. And so today, Matt invited us to just sort of go over that process. And so I'm here with my Board Chair, Linda Weber, and the Chair of the ARPA Review Committee, Alex El Paso. And I have a couple of handouts. And mostly what, what we wanted to do there was really provide the context of how the decisions were made. Because it was a really transparent and invested. Oh, thank you, sorry. I guess I don't have to go around the room.
Thanks.
It's been a long time since I was in the classroom. And so I'll just present that process and I will invite Alex and Linda to pipe up and correct me when I'm wrong, which sometimes happens. Everyone's in one. So anyway, we're just delighted and honored to have had the opportunity to do this. So thank you all very much. It was, I would say it was more arduous than we anticipated, but I think that's for the best. It was just a very, you know, intense and exciting process. So the little PowerPoint presentation I'm going to go over today, I'm basically going to review our charge, the charge that you gave us. I'm going to talk a little bit about the application process, sort of how we came up with that, the application and how we went through the process. And then go through how we did the review. And then finally, what our recommendations are, which you have. But I think the context is valuable. So this started a year ago, really, actually probably more than a year ago. We entered into a sub-recipient agreement with the town about a year ago to develop recommendations and distribute $500,000 worth of American Rescue Plan Act funding to charitable organizations serving the Guilford community. But in September of this year, we upped that, or you upped that to a million. Let's talk about sort of what happened. So, starting in February of this year, we did a bunch of things to try to prepare for the process. We identified what the ARPA requirements were, what the Treasury actually said that we could or could not do. We actually hired a consultant, George Kripta, to guide us and make sure that we were following in line with, with what we needed to do. And he ended up being just a treat to work with regardless, because he's just very, very smart and very nerdy, which I appreciate. And if George, if you're hearing that, it's said with love. Then we confirmed with, with the town our funding priorities. So in other words, what, what did we really want to make a difference in the community with these funding? And then we named an ARPA Review Committee. So we included our existing Grants Review Committee, which Alex chairs, which is, we called our Community Investment Committee. But recognizing that this was, you know, a really once in a lifetime opportunity, we wanted to expand that group larger, out into the broader community. So I'll talk about who we added there. Then we developed a unique application specific to ARPA. We established a timeline and we convened the local, our area nonprofits before we finalized anything to really just say, you know, tell us, please, what happened to you during COVID and what, what should we learn and understand as we're developing this process and the priorities? So what ended up through those conversations, we prioritized three things. One, basic needs. As we know, COVID really, if you were falling through the cracks already, COVID really pushed you through. And we wanted to make sure that the basic food, shelter, emergency, financial assistance was being addressed. Then we, we also wanted to strengthen our community, recognizing that in COVID, even though basic needs was really critical and human services, you know, the overall fabric of our community needed to be helped as well. So that's our arts and our culture, in addition to justice, equity and inclusion, you know, what, what makes, how can we make Guilford even more strong than it already is? And finally, we prioritize mental health, which as, you know, as we know, through lots and lots of studies around the impact of COVID really impacted everyone, particularly youth. So those were our three broad categories. Oh, hi, Peter.
Hello.
Hello. So the process itself, as I mentioned, we named a committee. So you can see the Board members are Alex, Linda, Sarah Blanton, Stephanie Little Brown, Ashley Fernandez and Judith Myers. We then expanded it out. So we included Pam Ellman, who is the Chair of the Guilford Community Services Council. I know I'm on that and I just can never remember. Chris Fapiano, who is a former Board Member and just a local wonderful person. Mary Jo Kessner, who has experience in housing and also is a local architect. Jim Mancini, local business owner, also a former Board Chair. Rob McCool, who's the Chair of the, obviously the Director of the Free Library. And Nolan Stankovich, which he is a senior at Guilford High School and listed all around right now. Chair of the Advisory Group, yes. So we really felt like we had community services represented, business, youth, philanthropy, financial, legal. So we felt very good about the strength of our, of our committee led by our fearless leader, Alex El Paso. So the process itself, on April 4th, I briefly mentioned this, we had that public meeting at the library to target and just open it up, the opportunity to our, to organizations serving the Guilford community. We had about 55 people there. I was on the big screen, I was, I was virtual that day. And then we spent May, June and July publicly announcing the opportunity. We really wanted to make sure people who had, who were qualified were going to apply. And that actually included by calling people and saying, hey, are you aware of this opportunity? And actually, that was the Falkner's Island Life Brigade. They had, you know, lots of our small organizations, you know, aren't really tapped in to what these opportunities can be. So we really wanted to be proactive in that regard. And then in June, on June 29th, we held a grantee workshop where we went over the fundamentals and the basics of how to apply, what the priorities were. And that was well attended. Although unfortunately, some folks who applied didn't attend that, so their, you know, their applications may not have been as strong as they could have been. And then on September 8th, the applications were due. So that's, that was the application process. So then in September, we had all of the applications and our review process began. So the committee met seven times and that included training, application review and preparing recommendations. Every committee member completed a confidentiality and conflict of interest form to really make sure we were balancing those, any potential conflicts. Because as we know, everyone in Guilford is involved in lots of different things. So we just wanted to be sure we were, that was really public. Then our consultant reviewed each and every application for eligibility under the ARPA guidelines. We really wanted to make sure that, that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. The most important thing obviously was that they demonstrated a negative economic impact created by COVID, which pretty much everyone, I think in this room even, can, can say that they were negatively impacted. So every committee member reviewed each application. Every application received a lead and a seconder. So there's always at least one committee member who was really into the reads on some of the applications. So it was a, it was a really thorough process. We had lots of very animated and exciting conversations at those meetings. People felt really strongly about certain things. And, and at the end, we came to consensus, which was really great. And through that process, you know, we modified grant amounts, we modified. It was really thoughtful, I would say. So at the end, our budget was a million dollars. We received 36 applications requesting a total of nearly $2 million. That ranged in asks from 5,000 to 230,000. We ultimately awarded 34, well, recommended to our Board of Directors, who then approved 34 grants totaling exactly a million dollars. Of those 17, so half, were recommended for full funding. Seven were recommended for partial funding. One application was referred back to the town, that was the Chamber of Commerce. We, we felt that the Chamber is, it's not, it was definitely impacted by COVID, but it's not a charitable organization. It's really a membership organization and we felt it was unfair for them to be compared next to like a community dining room in that regard. So we talked with Matt and we referred it back to the town for consideration. And I should say that we did the same process in Branford and that was our recommendation for Branford as well. And then one application was not recommended for funding of all of them. We can talk about that. So on the final page, you have the list of all of the applications that were requested. The organizations, we have the, the amount that was requested and then the recommendations. So you can see that half of them, so in the green column, you can see those were the ones that were fully funded. And mostly those were organizations that really hit it out of the park in terms of the, in terms of our priorities. So, and then thanks to Alex, we created, we, the Royal, Alex created a, some nice, I think, visual representation of how the funds were, were spent. So I'm going to pass these sandwiches. So the top pie chart, so that those three areas that I, that we prioritize were strengthening our community, basic needs and mental health. So you can see on the top chart how it broke out. And then each of the pie charts underneath represent a piece of, of the pie chart, right? So if you look at strength in our community, 60% of that was arts and culture, 20% was child and youth. In basic needs, you can see it was really split quite evenly between food, emergency assistance and youth and seniors. And then mental health, the majority of that was for intervention, basically. So we thought that was a nice overview.
Yeah, just to add to that, this is just a graphical representation of the dollar allocation, not the number of, not the number of applications we received. So I just want to make that point.
So I'll stop there. Linda or Alex, do you want to add anything?
No, it was, it's always interesting hearing it kind of summarized, because I can't believe a year and a half has gone by since we originally started the conversation. It was, it was really interesting, because as we designed our process, we were ready. And I knew we had the technology and when we early, earlier, we had conversations about why we were selected. But again, as we looked through applications, as we were defining standards and kind of going through our motions of how we approach philanthropy, it was just, we put a lot of hard work into that over the few, the last few years and it was really rewarding to see it kind of how seamless the process was. Like Liza said, there's a lot of really robust conversation and discussion, thoughtful discussion, thoughtful challenges, respectful challenges. And then ultimately, we ended it in a really great place. So I was very, very grateful to be a part of it. So thank you all for your vote of confidence in it.
And one thing Alex said at our very last meeting, which felt really great, was to come out of it at the other end, and I hope you share in this pride as well, that this funding is really going to make a difference, not only to the organizations that are being funded, but the individuals that they serve. I mean, these are really, this is the fabric of our community, is, are these organizations that serve these folks. And this is a one-time, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for funding to make up for this hole that COVID lost, so, or left, I should say. So I hope you share that pride with us.
Yes, I'll just have a couple of questions.
Oh, yes, please. Thank you.
I mean, I'm so glad that you had come up with this idea to deal with the funds, because not only did you do a great job, but you took a lot of pressure off getting it done elsewhere. And I don't know of anybody, any other organization that could have done it as well. So thank you for that. Two things, what's Jedi?
Oh, justice, education, justice, equity, diversity and inclusion.
Okay. And then I just want to touch on, and I think it was a great idea with the consultant, but do you have any feel for necessarily a dollar amount, but a percentage amount that might be attributed to administration of this project?
Yeah, 100%. So we, our contract was 5% for the town, with the town, just for the Guilford Foundation's end of it. And then we had allocated 4% for George's work, who's our consultant, but he has not met 4%. I, I'm trying, I don't have his final bill yet, but it is, it's well under 4%. So all in all, the administration's probably hover around, it's under 9%.
Can you feel comfortable with the numbers and that's good? I mean, it's got to be out there just so.
Oh, yeah, I know, I feel, I feel comfortable. I mean, it was a lot more work than we had anticipated, but it was also part of our mission regardless. So it was an opportunity for us, in addition to providing these funds, to continue to build the relationships with our local nonprofits.
It seems, it just slowly came in under the numbers that we had hoped and planned and it all seemed to work out. The only other question I have, and it probably is premature at this point in time, but needless to say, a lot of these names are very familiar to all of us. They're, they're organizations that have helped in that community for years. And as we go into the budget season, a lot of these names are going to come up again. And I just want to reaffirm in my mind that these funds are actually over and above what we're going to be faced with during budget cycle. These are for specific needs that holes that were created by the pandemic and that type of thing.
So to that point, the thing that is unique about these funds is that they are retroactive, as opposed to like the human services funding and our typical funding is proactive. So in other words, the, the organizations came in and said, this is how we were hurt. And they weren't saying things like, this is how we want to be, this is what we will do with the funds going forward. So when we review our normal grants, someone comes to us and says, if you give us these funds, we will plan for these kinds of activities, whether it's operating or whether it's some kind of a program. That's, that's typical. The ARPA funding says, these were the funds that were lost during that time and were never recovered. So in other words, it's, they're in the past. So that's the real difference between what you will see in your budget recommendations.
Just want to reemphasize that.
Perfect.
And then my last one, I apologize.
That was great.
Do you want to expand on the one that you were naming, Grant, was it a mechanical thing?
It was a mechanical thing. So we, the Guilford Foundation has a policy to support organizations that support the broader community. And so we, when it comes, this was a secular organization. And so when it comes to a religious organization, we will consider funding those organizations, but what they are, but the project must impact the broader community. So in other words, if St. George needed, was looking for some capital improvements for their, for their public room that they have in the back, that's a room that's used broadly by the community, that would be something we could consider. But we won't, and these funds would not consider lost revenue due to loss of congregation gifts, if that makes sense. So in other words, if the funding were just to support the congregation itself and that membership, we would not support that. And unfortunately, in this case, we had been approached by other churches and local organizations about funding and we had discouraged them. And so, so my hope is that there will be an opportunity for these organizations to come back. My understanding is that there continues to be some ARPA funding available. So I would hope that some of the churches, if they were negatively impacted, could come back to the town.
When you say we, is it a decision your, your committee made or was it an ARPA request?
It's not an ARPA, it's not ARPA. It's, it was, it was a decision that the Guilford.
It was a universal decision across all.
It was a universal across the board, yeah.
So, so really, the two things that were funded, you explained the Shoreline Chamber. The other entity could both come back to the town perhaps, because we still might have some money there, right? Yeah. So it'll become our problem or our concern.
And I will say that they demonstrated negative impact, you know, and so did the Chamber. But you know, these organizations both demonstrated negative impact. And I know that, you know, First Congregation Church, St. George's, potentially Temple Beth Tikva, you know, it, it would be, it would not have been fair for us to have considered this one when we'd already discouraged others from applying.
No, I have no problem with it, I just want to understand the mechanics of it.
Yeah.
As you had mentioned that, you know, some, some folks were more aware of grant applications and that type of thing. And I just want to make sure it wasn't a paperwork snafu, it was something that was consciously decided.
Yep.
I, I have sort of the same question regarding the nursery schools, the community nursery, North Guilford and then the Guilford Center for Children.
Yep.
Guilford Center for Children, I understand better, because I know they serve families with different kinds of incomes and get support from the state, et cetera. But there's other nursery schools in town besides the two that got the funds from here. Did they apply or are they, are these two different? Are these two not for profit and others are not?
As far as that, yes, that's correct. These are the only two nonprofit children organizations. And we fully funded both of them. Because again, that was one of the, that was one of the areas that folks were hardest hit with.
So this may not be fair to ask you, but as, as we go into budget season, if we have the responsibility of looking at the Human Services portion of the budget, I, I don't imagine we're at the point where we're not going to hear about COVID anymore. I mean, we plugged a hole of what happened in the past, but it's still affecting, is that fair to say?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to know at this point, is it the new normal? You know, and I do, I mean, and I, I sit on the Human Services Council and we have applications reviewed. And I think it is a lingering impact, but I, as my, I've read so many applications over the last couple of months, I'm trying to think about. Again, I think the difference with what you'll see with the Human Services budget is that they'll be for next year's projects and programs. Yeah.
It's still effective.
Yeah, still effective in different ways. It's so, it's more like, this is how we have to do our business now, right? And so we're still trying to figure that out, we all are, really. Like with the whole Zoom situation.
How many committee meetings did you have to do this?
Seven.
Seven, yeah. It's a lot of work.
It was a lot of work.
And I think one of the themes coming out too, and that we, you know, as we, again, these are retroactive, but as we assess the applications, we're knowing that we're in the new normal. So to your question about the impact of COVID, it's, are, have organizations felt a shift in how are they going to meet the demand? Because we want to make sure that they're shifting to provide their services in a longer term, this new normal that we're in. So when we were looking at things, people that were prioritizing strategic planning or have pivoted or are finding ways to operate, those are ones we really dug into, because they show that you're not trying to hold on to go back. We're, are seeing the opportunity to drive the organization forward. So, you know, as you ask that question, as you're contemplating budget and allocation for next year, how are they making the pivot to make sure they're not funding what's not working anymore?
That's a great point, Alex, thanks.
And to echo the comment about the process that you followed, it's not a surprise, but thank you. I think we'll be, at the beginning, we knew this was a wise direction to go. And just hearing about the outreach that you did and the evaluation process, really appreciate that.
Oh, I was at that meeting at the library with the 55 people or organizations that were represented. And you said 36 actually applied for this. Was the application form difficult for some people to fill out? Was it challenging for some people? Or did you help them along the way?
We helped out, we had a workshop. The Jen was always great at, you know, responding to any technical difficulties. I will say one thing that happened is when we sent the award notices out last week, some of them went to spam. The awards, so you know, we're having this press conference on Thursday, which I hope you're all able to come to. And so I sent out an invitation to the awardees and they're like, oh, well, we'll hear about our award at that time. We said, wait, check your junk mail. But anyway, that, I, that's a little bit of a digression, but no, you know, the, the application is pretty straightforward. It's, it's our, for anyone who had applied for our funding in the past, it's the same platform. So we didn't, people I think are pretty used to filling things out online, which is nice.
I'm tapped into at least one group who went to that meeting and then kind of came back and said, we really can't see applying for this. Because we, we applied for other things and, and we're okay now. So maybe that, hopefully that's a portion of the 55 that fell off.
And we did have, like, as I mentioned, there were a couple that were brand new, the Sailing Foundation, which was interesting. Falkner's Island had never applied to us, the Knights of Columbus. So, so we did see a, we did see a different, some, some additional folks that we hadn't funded before. So that was nice also to have the opportunity to learn more about their organization.
And I'm glad to see a couple of them are regional, like the community dining room and reach grow, but you know, we know they serve Guilford people.
And BH Care.
And BH Care, right? And Hostage, yeah.
And at the risk of repeating, some of the things that have already been said, thank you, this is a wonderful process and really appreciate the way it was presented and carried out. I mean, in some cases, it's a fair amount of money, but if you consider that it's retrospective of of the impact from COVID, it's three years worth of disruption to some of these organizations. Lost membership, lost funding paths, any number of things have happened. So you've obviously done a nice job, you know, focusing on helping these groups continue their mission, hopefully. The overhead piece, I think bears repeating again. I mean, nonprofits occasionally get a bad rap for spending any overhead. But if you don't spend some overhead, you don't have the resources available to put the energy and thoughtful analysis in that clearly happened here. Those numbers, I think that's just tremendous return on these dollars. So thank you all for that. And and ultimately, please don't just, it's already been said, the substance is benefit these individual groups. This spills out over the entire community as you've laid it out. And thank you, that's, I just kind of think it's really impressive.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I think it's been a pleasure, that's, it's an honor, so thanks.
Great.
And kind of glad it's over. We're almost over.
There's stress and there's bad stress, but it's all stress.
Yes, yes, and yeah, we just have to cut those checks now.
There we go.
There we go. Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your meeting. And it was nice of Matt to not be able to be here. Now, you already did.
Do we have to vote to approve these amounts? No?
Thank you. This was obligated to, that's, under the rules, we obligated these funds to the foundation.
Okay, yeah, the word recommend, recommendations, all the confusing. Those are being recommended to us, correct.
Please, please.
We're not, yeah.
All right, thank you, thanks Pete.
Thank you.
All right, everybody. Good work.
Thanks.
So in the, let's say, let's say clear, we have four point two. Let me just read this because it's quick, it's quick, brief, I'll reintroduce what happened. Dave Castro has given a lot of thought to a lot of the processes of running Public Works Department, one of which is, we've switched, I hope I got this exactly right. We switched to a sand, a salt only method of road maintenance. Dave, if I get any of this wrong, please chime in. And as a consequence, we had some leftover.
It must be that salt, it must be the salt sand mix.
It's got to be the salt sand mix.
Dave.
There he goes. This says salt only, but it's a salt sand mix, right?
Correct, it's the, it's the sand salt mix that we have at the yard. We don't use that. We just use straight salt now and pretreated salt. So that's why we're selling this material.
Okay, so Tracy, I'm just literally going right on here to the extent you're keeping this as a, as a note from premier paving. So they're buying a excess salt sand mix that we have and we are no longer have plans to use, right, Dave?
Uh, no, we do not, we have no plans to use it anymore at all.
Great.
How does this number compare to our cost? I'm sorry to.
That's okay, that's right, good question.
It's really hard to tell because I don't know how long that material sat there for. So you have to look at what was the price when we originally purchased it, which may have been five years ago, may have been two years ago, I don't know. I know when I, last year, sand, sand itself was being sold for twenty dollars a yard. And the salt was mixed in right away from what I'm being told from the crew here. So I couldn't tell you how much it.
Of sands, twenty, how much was salt a yard?
I don't know how much it was back then. Right now, it's it's sixty dollars a yard.
Okay, so they got a bargain, but we got rid of it.
I think we made a better bargain because it would cost us a lot more to to dispose of it properly.
Yeah.
Because it's considered contaminated once we, once we use it or getting rid of it in any way, you know?
Sort of curious, there's no, wait, oh, I just. No, go ahead, I only, it's finished.
If we were to use it on the road as we have in the past, I know it's different system than what we're want to do right now. Are you telling me that we couldn't use it on the roads because it's contaminated and some new regs or something?
No, I'm sorry. So if we use it, as soon as we put it out on the road, it's considered contaminated. And then we have to go and pull it out of the catch basins and sweep it again, and then we would have to pay to dispose of it. So for someone to take it now in the state that it's in, because it's not contaminated, is great because a lot of towns are pulling away from it and the market is actually shrinking for selling this material.
Yeah, is this the risk, did we put out a notice or something soliciting offers? And this is the only or highest one that came in or was this just a sort of a one-off offer that we got?
So it was posted on the town website and then I reached out on the listserv community, which is a message board for all public works departments in the state. And this is the only one who came back with a bid.
Are more places switching over to the new salt only method?
Yes, yes, you're, you see it every year, departments are getting away from the sand salt. Actually, a real quick funny story is, I sent the crew to a snow plowing class last week and the instructor went over the different materials. And he said, sand, you know, he's talking about what the effectiveness is of each material. He he put, he said, do you guys know what the effectiveness of sand is on the roads? And he just put a big old zero and he said, it does nothing, does nothing for traction because after the seventh vehicle, the traction is gone, it freezes in. He just went on and on and he's like, towns are pulling away from this because it's an environmental nightmare down the road and it doesn't work.
Environmental nightmare, meaning it falls into the catch basins?
Right, so it's catch basins. Now, we have a lot of swales in town. You see the shoulders are built up, that's from the, from the use of sand salt mix as well, because the sand just sits there. So now the water can't shed off the road and get to the the swales that we have in town. So we're noticing that and we're starting to like cut the roads, the sides of the shoulder, so that the water will go back into those swales, but that happens as well.
I mean, salt has got to have a higher environmental impact than just sand. It's actually the fact that we can measure and reduce the amount of salt. So the environmental impact is, we got to wait and see how this evolves.
Right, and and so we, we put out two hundred pounds per lane mile with the salt, which in comparison to the sand salt mix, you're putting out a thousand pounds per lane mile.
Yeah, I I understand. While I, while I struggled with your logic when you first proposed this, I have come to understand it that it's more a a management pers- pers- more precise management of it that that's going to improve it all the way around. Because, you know, the minute I heard, you know, the environmental question, I said to myself, well, sand's got to be better for the environment than salt, even if you have to clean it up more. But I understand your logic about reducing the overall usage, so I hope science turns out right, that's all I can say.
And we're not done, we we are going to be, right now, we're at two hundred pounds because this is our first step. But my goal is to get it substantially less than that with different methods so that we do use less salt than we're using right now.
Do we need a motion for this sale or what is it?
Yeah.
We already added it to the agenda.
We've added the agenda, it's four point two, we need to add, we do need a motion to approve the sale of this material.
I'll move.
Second, okay, great. Thanks, Dave, for that explanation. Any further questions or comments from the board? Dave, anything further? Good to go?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, so with all that, then, all in favor of approving this sale, say aye. Aye, any opposed? No, thank you, Dave, you're good to go, thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
So then we have section five, some appointments and resignations. Looks like Chris Hodgson has concluded two terms on the golf course commission, eight years. Motion to accept that with thanks and regret. Let's lay this aside.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of accepting that resignation, say aye. Aye. Okay, then we have a recommendation to reappoint Jay Gustus into the Golf Course Commission for a term that expires September thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, any questions, comments? All in favor of reappointing Jay Gustus into the Golf Course Commission, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right, thanks, everyone. So then we have requests for use of town property. The Guilford Arts Center wants to put a sign advertising its holiday expo, wait a second. Place a sign on the green advertising the holiday expo, it looks like it may have started December one to the twenty fourth. The sign placement, that will be December seventh through the twenty first.
Some moved. Second.
Okay, any questions or comments there? No, all in favor of the Arts Center sign, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, request from the Boy Scouts, place a sign on the green advertising tree, Christmas tree recycling. This is both four seventy one and four seventy five.
Some moved.
Second.
All in, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Brings us to committee reports. Does anybody have anything that's going on behind the scenes? All this tireless work. Anybody receive any correspondence? It's been quiet, holidays are upon us.
Yeah, we had that one come in through the town website about the marijuana issue. Everyone saw that.
Yes, thank you.
I I didn't see it, but.
It was a citizen saying, saying that he was not in favor of a retail at town.
Okay.
So, yeah, thanks for pointing that one out, so. Any, any old business? Everything's tidied up, we'll wait till Matt gets back. New business? I have nothing. And do we have any public forum? We're left with town officials on our, on our screen and no one's here, so hearing none. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, Tracy.
Beat that, Matt.